So thank you for all the questions, not more than we expected. So unfortunately that means about my disappointed people, so I'm really sorry about that. But if I could once again ask the candidates to be brief and not try and... Let's have more applause for the ones with the shorter answers, it's encouraging. Then we may be able to get through more than a couple of questions.
Yeah, I think really there's a lot of interesting stuff here and it would be a shame to omit some of these.
Okay, so is that okay? Everyone, if you could stand up for me, three or four sentences, sit down, you want to go, yay!
Chris.
Shut up Chris and get on with it!
Right, okay. It's my fault now, I'm not the most one, honestly. Right then, may we have your opinion on building in back gardens to the detriment of surrounding neighbours? We're going to start as we did with almost every question last year with Joel.
Thank you, you can have my opinion, I don't like it. I live in Cavendish Avenue, we have had an ongoing discussion around the background development in Cavendish Avenue. Obviously in some instances you can see perhaps some explanation why a particular situation requires further development, but by and large the strategy has to be to keep our gardens green. They were there as part of the design and the feel of those places and to stop compromising on that is to stop compromising on the very quality of life that we are living in this ward for. So I'm singularly opposed to that kind of element and we've waited everywhere.
I also oppose any developments in the back garden. In Queen Edith Ward, there are a few large houses which are bought by builders in Queen Edith Way, from Hens Road, and a number of flats are coming up. I strongly oppose that, I think that kills the residential character and I think planning permission should not be given to those places where, you know, the flats are coming up at the back garden. And I think as local residents we should oppose it and I have opposed it, thank you very much.
Yes, you won't be shocked to hear that I'm also going to join the candidates opposing the development of back gardens. And to that end, 291 Hills Road was not the only planning application that I objected to which went through this way. One of the problems we've got in the city is what we can actually achieve within the framework of the planning department, of the planning committee. And so it's really important that we work to improve our planning rules and as such we have a new emerging local plan. But my concern is that we haven't really ended up with a local plan that's going to help us to any degree. And so what we really want to see is a local plan that allows us to have teeth in the decision-making. Decision-making for planning applications in this ward used to be made in this room. And then that was centralised when Labour took control of the city. And so now it feels very remote for many people, even though, you know, many of us have been... ward councillors are on that funding committee from time to time. So I really want to see that brought back to the local area committee and then I'll know that you guys will be here and you'll be able to have a better input to that process. Unfortunately, instead of that, the likelihood is that Labour are already talking to South Cambs about combining that service as well. And the issue there is that South Cambs District Council have much more restrictive rules about what local councillors can actually call into the committee. So that situation is likely to get much, much worse for us because even your local councillors won't be able to stand up for you in committee.
So the question is about the building in back gardens. And my question has to be alongside that, do they build extra roads for the cars that come to park and air to visit the house? When we have HMOs which are increasingly developing across the whole of our city, where do those cars go? They block up the verges, the streets get busier. But at the same time it's all too easy to stand and say, "I'm against and that's it, vote for me", but actually we face some real challenges. And we have a growing city and I think it's right to say the brownfield sites are where we have to develop, rather than in people's back gardens where you have already densely populated parts of the city. I'd also say this, that I agree that it's good to have local representation when it comes to planning applications. But I also just want to highlight, when it came to 291 Hills Road, yes, local councillors were engaged, but I would also suggest that it is the work of councillor Kevin Price and Claire King, who hopefully will become a councillor soon, who worked really hard for this area. I think we have to have a connected solution for all of Cambridge and not just one in the local area. So we have local voices being represented clearly when it comes to planning applications and when the local plan is finally agreed by the inspectorate, that we do have teeth to work as a whole city on these problems, because it is a problem. And so yeah, to answer your question, yes, I think it is a problem with the developments in back garden and I'm against it.
Okay, we've got a couple of questions which might be mergeable, so I'll read both out and the candidates can answer either or both. But again, let's be brief, so well done everyone. So the second question is, how will you work with students at local colleges to get them campaigning for better public transport? That's a very specific combination. And with so many businesses coming in, why are there no plans to ask them to help fund public transport? Offer them to provide public transport for their employees? So that's, you know, how do we tackle the profit transport problem with respect to local businesses and with students?
AstraZeneca is funding the station up at Edinburgh's.
It's only one.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. And that is one of the things that we can achieve, is where there's development going on, then we can make sure the developers are making contributions to infrastructure and transport in the local area. But the question was specifically with regard to existing institutions such as the colleges and the second half, it's all their first?
Businesses.
With businesses, thank you. So I think it's really important that we start to invite them along and get them involved in our community because I think that everybody in Queen Edith feels, that the biomedical campus in particular, and I really made an excellent point in that respect, but they don't feel that they've reached out to the community, that we've been involved in that conversation and we definitely feel that we're going to be very seriously impacted when that opens. So I think that making sure that we insert ourselves into that conversation at a much earlier stage is really important.
I'm so glad this question or questions has come up because it is essential to the answers to many of our transport problems. And actually it does annoy me somewhat when my party and others talk about rail all the time and buses kind of don't even get mentioned or the kind of impacts that buses can have to an area don't even seem to come up to consideration. So I think we have an issue right now where we have a massive... Well, the opposite, we've got complete lack of competition in our bus service. You know, the other night we heard George Ferguson say in Bristol we have about eight bus services, we've got one and a bit. It doesn't work in the interest of local people, certainly doesn't work in the interest of students. And I know Hills Road, there are many students who come from miles away and have to drive and then of course they park here. And if they had a bus service which would work, then maybe they'd be able to do something. So what's a solution to that problem, rather than just moaning? I'll answer your question alone. This is something I've been thinking about quite seriously for a long time now and it's a dream, so just bear with me as I take you on this policy. And that's to have some kind of people's bus service, something that works, not just for Cambridge but for also South Cambridgeshire as well. Because when I was meeting residents in Camborne, meeting residents who have moved to North Stone, they're talking about the fact that yes, you've got the guided busway there, you've got number four from Camborne, but actually they want so much more because it takes about an hour to get into central Cambridge. That's just not good enough, we need something better. So people don't have to rely on their car, instead they can have maybe a better bus service. And I'd be really interested in local businesses part funding that because it'd benefit them as well, as well as council money. Let's not pretend there's some sort of massive amount of money the council has to spend on these things, but local businesses being motivated to work with the community to actually provide a service that would work well. Thank you to AstraZeneca and those who have already, that's important. But I think we could do a lot more to make sure we have something that should work throughout all. And I had a question, sorry.
Yeah, I wanted somebody like Am, for example, they have a bus that picks up their employees from the station. Why do other companies not do that and why do we not force them to do that? They profit from being in Cambridge, they profit from status and prestige, shouldn't they offer something in return?
And in fact, it's a really good point because I know people who work outside Bemiram and other places and they find that their services are going and they're being told they have to drive or they have to cycle and that's all very well, when we have the beast or the mini beast come, no one's going to be doing that and to the gumshire or vice versa. So you're quite right, those businesses shouldn't be forced to do something because they have to be responsible for the impact they have on our city. It's all very well coming here for the brains and the expertise, but at the same time if they're not giving something back, and I think bus services are a huge part of that, and that's why Dan Green's people's bus service, it's just being created and I'm talking honest, but that's why I think that would address that by having businesses coming together to invest in something. But individually, private bus services would be a very good idea as well. Maybe they could even charge some local people who want to use them, that makes sense for them to offset any expenses. But it is a responsibility they must take more seriously, I totally agree with your point. So that wasn't short at all, was it?
So if I foreshorten the two questions together, I think it's how do you get businesses and students engaged in our transport problems? I don't rightly know first of all, but we can't just rely on goodwill. AstraZeneca is a good example, I suppose, a rather large company, offering to engage with the community as a sort of a nice sweet tablet to swallow in terms of the rest of the challenge that they're imposing on our community. It does require leadership, it does require pressure from local government, from the city council to ensure that we are not just pandering to the whims of these larger corporations, inviting them here and thinking they're such a good thing because they're a great flag to fly over Cambridge. It's important that legislation is put into place and there are procedures in which they are made to participate and contribute to the needs of the local community and not just offer it as a little extra sugar pill to swallow.
I think Gail has rightly pointed out that AstraZeneca has already offered that, public transport to their employees. And I know a couple of companies, Grant Park, they also offer a similar service, but having said that, that's not enough because more and more people from Cambridge commute to those places. It is absolutely important that large companies, they come up with public transport. Having said that, South Train Station in Biomedical Campus will solve the problem to a large extent because once the station is up and running, it will bring in a lot more employees to Biomedical Campus as major employers like AstraZeneca and many others will open their doors at the site in a few months' time. So I think it is important that we have a light rail and Cambridge Underground Station, which is planned by our councillor Peter Vermeer. And he is determined to make it happen. I think light rail will connect Cambridge City with all the market towns, that will reduce traffic and also that will solve the problem of public transport. And Underground Train Station will solve the traffic movement to and from work and also reduce traffic congestion. I strongly believe that will improve our life in Cambridge, thank you. And with respect to students, I think students need to be motivated, we need to encourage them to join business, to join community and in hand to solve this problem, thank you.
Very much, could I ask the audience not to chat up too much because I think we could drag it up slightly? It's a little unfair suggesting things up that candidates might not have a chance to respond to because it's going to be for later. So our third question, what we do with Italian, we're okay. So we've got two more which I think you might be able to combine here. And the questions are very much city council related. How would you try to improve the services that keep the city clean? And do you agree with cuts to funding for open spaces and streets in Cambridge? And we will start with... Sorry, sorry, it's red.
Right, I think the two questions there, the second one is the answer to the first. We want to live in a city that's clean and tidy. Public toilets in the centre of the city are in the worst condition that I've ever seen them and I've been here nearly 20 years as I've said. There are many of those that we need to be working hard on. Local papers have been reporting just recently, as soon as the sun came out, our parks were in a dreadful condition. Now, we could say it ever was thus, was it? Or does it feel like it's getting worse? Or at least, as the city grows and expands and all these people come into the area, don't we think that we need to be trying harder to make sure that we continue to have a clean and tidy city? Now, instead of that, we see Labour City Council has decided to save £130,000 on the streets and open spaces budget this year. That is not the direction that I would take us in and I would work very hard to make sure that we replace that funding so that we can live in a clean, tidy, safe city. Well, I'm sorry to keep things brief, but I would oppose, I oppose cuts and I would campaign for more investment in these services.
Yeah, keeping the city clean is definitely the council's responsibility, but having said that, cleaning starts at home. We have to also be vigilant and we have to also make sure our community is clean, our neighbourhood is clean and we see anything wrong, we should immediately report to council and council is doing their best. I oppose the cut, any possible cut by city council for training is definitely not done and I feel that we as a community can solve this problem in coordination with council, thank you very much.
Excellent question and of course, I think we all agree, we want to have clean streets, we want to have proper funding and we don't want to have cuts where sometimes we have and we find them disdainful. And I think it's also important to point out, we have a Labour-run council and if I was your candidate locally, I'd be your strong voice inside that council chamber with the party who are in government. And I would be, I would be standing up for what you want and what I want and I want a clean city. So I definitely agree with the premise of the question.
Well, I think we've got to have one more and then we'll have the... Give all the candidates a chance for a closing statement, Sam's going to decide which other one.
So just a quick show of hands, do you want something that is super local or do you want something that is kind of regional?
Super local, who's up?
Super local.
Or regional? You can't say we're not fair here, okay. This is super local. The question is, who is responsible for the road surface mess in Hills Road? Who's going to pick up the bill? And at last Joel's going to give the answer.
I'll let someone else who knows more specifically about who is responsible for that and who's going to pick up the bill. So I'll pass the question on, it's a very local issue with a very local answer which someone will be able to answer.
Now, the development on Hills Road in particular was put in only very recently and I think it's really, well, it's embarrassing at one level, shocking at another to see the potholes appearing just outside here in particular a few weeks ago. I know that the response is quick, but then the question has to be, why was the response needed in the first place? And I think this is what worries people, so when the county council have these big projects and they want to change areas, will they then have to invest the money afterwards to try and put right the damage afterwards? Now, the part of the question I can't answer, I don't know if it's the quality of the materials that are used, I don't know if it's the effort and ability of the people who put it in, but I suspect that the root cause of both those things is probably a lack of proper investment, which in the long run, we know it's a closed economy, in the long run costs us far, far more. And it's not just Hills Road, we have potholes appearing all over the ward, which I suggest is actually a very serious problem. And that's where the money must be put in because as a cyclist, I find myself trying to avoid these. Cars are coming by quickly, sometimes they're avoiding potholes, I'm getting out of their way. And it's not very much an experience sometimes, being a cyclist in Cambridge or a driver for that. So the county council most certainly is responsible. I think it's a funding issue up to me underneath that and I wish that they would improve something as quick as they could.
Thank you, and if we talk specifically about Hills Road, the road surface in Hills Road was resurfaced four, five, I'm going to keep saying numbers until my colleague says it, five years ago. But the problem with that is that it is a funding issue and that road surface wasn't done to the depth that county councillors wanted it to be done to. It was Hobson's choice, do you want to do some of it to the proper, complete depth or shall we do it all to the current standard that we see now? And we see the result of that, after a harsh winter and we know that those type of services could break up in the cold. And straight away, as soon as that weather warmed up and the buses basically just destroyed it, threw it all over the place. Now, obviously it is really heartening to see that our county council can have a meeting with the highways officer, make a huge shopping list of all of the problems that we've seen around. Big potholes on Nightingale Avenue that have been pointed out, they're on the list, I promise you. Queen Edith Way, you come around the corner from Fenton Road roundabout and there are big holes right there. And you're absolutely right because that's where we're cycling right now. And obviously we can see the result outside here. So yes, there are problems with the road, yes, they're related to funding and yes, we are getting on with the work that's required to fix them.
Yes, we do have, you know, problems with potholes specifically in certain parts of Queen Edith. Also the Hills Road, I have recently taken up the potholes issue with our county councillor Amanda and she's doing what she can. And I've also highlighted the potholes in Hills Road. In fact, when I tweeted, you know, an army of Lib Dem, they attacked me just because I tweeted the potholes on Hills Road. And I couldn't believe the way they get aggressive when you highlight, they think it's only their property, they have the ownership, they have the right to highlight issues. No, other parties can also highlight. And also if you have potholes, it's easy to pass on the blame to county council. Yes, the ownership is county council, they will pick up the bill, but it is the responsibility of elected councillor to solve the problem. It is unfair to blame each and every time, oh, it's a Conservative majority, so it's their problem. No, it's not their problem. I have met Cambridge Shaun and Peter Vermeer this week and I have asked him this question about potholes. He has categorically informed me that he has approved £950,000 to county council to solve the pothole problems. So why are the Lib Dem councillors not highlighting the issues rather than passing on the blame to county council for everything? Potholes are so dangerous, cyclists, the motorcycle riders, it poses serious threat to their life and it is inviting to have big accidents happening and potholes are not addressed. And, you know, I think it's a high time that you guys decide, you know, and at the end of the day, it's good to vote for who. So you decide whether you should keep on voting for Lib Dem or you want a breath of fresh air who can solve the problem. Thank you very much.
We're going to have closing statements from the candidates now, but as still was a rather personal attack on one of the candidates, I'm going to give a little bit for 10 seconds before, just before you, do you want to have a quick now or before your closing statement? Mans, sorry, I didn't know you were on Twitter.
If you don't know, I've been sorry for you. Your army's attacking me all the time on Twitter.
Right.
Just, can I just add one point? Nothing to do with being an engineer myself, I just want to address the roads, why these potholes appear and what happens. We have seen this happening a lot, I'm a civil engineer for people in this and the main problem is, as you somebody mentioned, when the works come, there's not enough qualified engineers in the council who understand the problem. And why it's happening, technical knowledge is really lacking.
That's very interesting.
And that is the real problem why.
Of course it's a long party issue.
Which is, it is democrats trying to make decisions and really they don't have the technical understanding and background.
Thank you. Well, as it happens, it's a perfect question to me because I'm in the middle of writing an article for the local paper. It answers exactly that and I know who's responsible for the road surface mess in Hills Road. Here's a spoiler, it's the Romans. Right, we're going to have our closing statements now, and then again, 60 seconds each. You know, basically the question is, round it all up, why should people here vote for you?
Well, thank you again, I'm pleased, it's always a pleasure to be here, to join in discussions, it's nice to see some fire and belly of those people, both on the floor and here off the table. The excuses that we face are real and I hope, as you can see, everyone is taken very seriously. I'm proud to stand here for those members of our community who like to vote green, who've always voted green, and always open to people who would like to switch and vote green on this occasion to be able to vote for a new way. But I'm well aware where the battle is really placed in this ward. It's no surprise and I don't need to pretend that I'm really throwing myself into the ring with any real chance of success. So what I ask you in this closing statement is, whoever it is that ends up representing this ward, that you make sure as residents and citizens, that you know their email address, their telephone number, you know where they live and you keep them accountable for all the promises that they've made and you ensure that they're always asking the difficult questions, challenging complacency, challenging the sort of standard responses or allowing things just to happen as they always have. Because this person who will be representing you, sadly it will be just the man amongst us tonight, but nonetheless whoever it is is someone who has to listen to all of us who live in this ward and please hold them accountable, whoever they may be, whether it's all colour or whether it's not.
Now, this I find is the most un-British part of the evening when you say, "Can you please do something for me?" And the British part of me wants to say, "No, it's okay, don't worry", but I want to talk about the serious reason why I am standing and ultimately the decision is yours, it's not mine. I'm not going to try and convince you now, I think you've probably made up your mind. But I want you to just ponder these questions because ultimately it comes down to, who is the person that you believe will be your most effective local champion? Now, I'm not going to attack other parties, I refuse to do that. I'm going to keep on a playing I think is decent and honourable. I'm going to put out my platform, I'll put out my platform as to why I believe that I am that person for you. And then the last question I pose is, are you happy currently with your representation or do we need to have a change in this ward? I know the answer to that question was, "I believe", but I leave the answer individually to you.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening to hear all of your candidates, it's been an absolute pleasure to have you here. I want to come to sum up with a really simple message. For a long time I've had a real passion for community and giving back to a society that's been incredibly kind and generous to me and my family. I feel optimistic about what we can achieve together, but it's going to take continued hard work to push back the tide of unwelcome development and benefit from the economic opportunities presented by the rapid growth that we see around us, which is coming in any case, you can see that. The Greater Cambridge Partnership and the Combined Authority have demonstrated that they lack the strategic intelligence and the leadership to take us forwards. Our input is vital in that conversation. And it's easy to get distracted and indeed disheartened by these big picture problems that face us. However, as your city councillor, I want to bring a renewed local focus. The city council must stop failing in its day job of keeping our area clean and tidy and safe. If you vote for me next Thursday, I will be a hard-working and compassionate councillor, maintaining our position in an open, inclusive city. maintaining our position in an open, inclusive city with a council which is working for us all. Thank you.
As I said in the beginning, the reason I joined politics three years back, I wanted to solve the parking issues in Queen Edith and that motivated me to join Conservative Party. I passionately believe in bringing some changes in the community and if elected, I will definitely try my best to bring some changes in Queen Edith. It is my advantage, I strongly believe, that we have three regional leaders from our party who are willing to extend their support and nobody can do better than a local MP, a police and crime commissioner, a Cambridge shire, mayor. I think three of them put together, they are going to provide huge support to me to implement few changes and I think Queen Edith's residents will benefit from that and I seriously mean it and I have no other reasons to ask you, please go and vote for me on 3rd of May, make it happen, give us a chance to prove what we can do for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much all for the candidates tonight. Jonathan was slightly under the weather, Colin who's not done this before.
I'm not going to yell at him.
He's never going to be a MP. And Manas was certainly keeping it lively, it was absolutely wonderful. Three things before we go. One, as ever with community forum events, we do have a cost of putting this tonight and our time isn't given for free and we love the area, we'll do that, but if you've got a few pence, you can put it in the pig bucket on the way out, we would be really, really grateful. My son's prep school headmaster down the road used to say, I don't want to hear the chink of metal, just a nice crisp sound. But we're happy with the chink of metal here. Secondly, we have, as you go out the door on the left in the rather dark festival, there's an exit poll, we're not asking you how you're going to vote, we wouldn't dare to do that, but we are asking you if tonight changed your mind or if not, we should be very interested to know. And third, and finally, I'd just like to have a big round of applause for our four candidates, very brave and to stand up.